Good evening. I'd like to call the regular board meeting of the Waterloo Community School District to order, let you know that Angela Weekly will be joining us by phone this evening. So if you hear me talking to the desk, that's what I'm doing down here. So when we begin this evening with a moment of silence, I would like to ask all of you to perhaps hold in your thoughts. We have a missing student in our district from Waterloo West High School. His name is Mo Sed. This information has been broadcast on KWWL as well as in the Courier. So if you could keep his family in your thoughts and prayers, we would sure appreciate it for our moment of silence this evening. Thank you. Now please rise and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I will read our mission statement this evening. The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. The next item on our agenda is information from individuals and delegations. Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to address the board? And if so, please come forward and state your name and address? Sir, can you turn right? The microphone in front of you has a little bar that says "push." Will you push that and see the green light comes on?
Yep.
Great. Perfect.
I didn't know I needed to be amplified.
That's all right. You're good to go.
I've always been amplified. But anyhow, my real concern is, I had a young man that, or I have a young man that I continue to mentor that was in the Waterloo School Districts. And his story is similar to a lot of young men and young ladies in the school district. He left year 15 months ago for Job Corps. They tested him at Job Corps. He read at a level a little below a sixth grade while he was, should have been, a sophomore. His reading, his comprehension, his math, all were comparable. He went to Job Corps. Before he could take a class, they put him through some intensified learning. In other words, they taught him to read. They taught him to write. They taught him to do all this. And as I see it, and having worked with kids in all these schools, not just a mentor, that we're failing our students, our young students. Our kids are not graduating because they don't have the basics, the reading, writing, arithmetic. And I think we're more concerned about academies and kids graduating job-ready when we don't, most of them or a lot of them don't have a foundation. I think we should be putting more resources on the early years than on the later years. I think we're concerned about bricks and mortar. I was at Grant School. I watched part of the roof collapse there, the outside wall collapsed one day when I was there. So I know buildings are a concern. But our primary concern has to be getting these kids started off on a solid foundation. And I don't see it happening right now in the Waterloo School Districts. We need more kids or more teachers, more support on the elementary level so they have the basics, that it lowers the dropout rate, that it increases their chances for college, that it increases their chances for technical schools, and it makes a lot of kids happier when they're successful rather than failures. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Anyone else? Then with that, this evening, we'll move on to our consent agenda. And it's fairly lengthy this evening, so bear with me while I read through it. The consent agenda consists of the minutes of the October 12, 2015, regular board meeting, and the October 19, 2015, board workshop, personnel appointments and adjustments, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, the West High School vocal trip, the appointment of the 2015-2016 School Improvement Advisory Committee, a delegate assembly representative, a cooperative sponsorship agreement, an inter-district transportation agreement, a textbook adoption for high school career and technical education programs, and an Irving Elementary fencing project. Are there any items that board members would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Thank you. Item D.
Item J.
Item J. Okay.
Items H, Hotel, and J, Juliet.
H, and a second on the J. Great. Anything further? Then all those in favor, I need a motion then to put items A, B, C, E, F, G, and I on the table. May I get that motion, please?
So moved.
And a second? Then all those in favor of approving the pre-mentioned items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us then to item D on page 16, which is the West High School Vocal Music Trip. Hang on. And the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve travel to Burbank, Illinois from November 12 through the 14 of 2015 for the West High Vocal Music Students. Can I get that motion on the table? Yeah. Till the end. Can I get that motion on the table, please?
So moved.
And a second? Great. Would you like to come up and tell us a little bit about this trip, please?
Good evening. My name is Bruce Barnett. I live at 429 Medbrook Lane, Waterloo, Iowa, 50701. And I'm here to read a letter from Mr. James Haley, the Vocal Music Director for West High School.
Great.
To the Waterloo Board of Schools, Board of Education, this statement is read on behalf of James Haley, the Vocal Music Director at Waterloo West. Each year, the National Association of Teachers of Singing hosts many prestigious singing competitions. I'm requesting board approval for seven Waterloo West High School students to attend the Nats Central Region Competition. Students of high school to doctoral levels of study will meet in Burbankus, Illinois for two days of friendly competition. If approved, the West High students will compete in musical theater and classical categories. Students are preferring music of many time periods, languages, and styles. Translations, both poetic and literal, along with phonetic dictation are all taught, reinforced, and applied as necessary as our lessons proceed. As West would be the only public school participating, with most competing entered by private voice studio, emphasis on the preparation process is even more vital and poignant to my goal as a teacher. As we strive to build basic literacy to further learning in all subjects, the preparation for this competition allows students to delve further into the basic scaffolding laid in the classroom. Vocabulary and knowledge pertaining to music, the physiology and science of singing, phonetics of language, and the history of societies in relation to the music are rest at the center of our lessons. Finally, I wish to inform you that the figures you received in the board packets are now more in limbo due to a need for further investigation into transportation for the students. As this is a two-night out-of-state trip, various issues with transportation, insurance, and other basics of the trip like this arise. For example, I am now aware that transporting students in a 12-to-15 passenger van in Iowa for a school-related trip is illegal. I'm now down to two options. One option is to allow students to ride with their parents, many of whom will attend. Number two, upon discussion with Waterloo Schools District officials, come up with a parent waiver form granting student permission to ride with either myself or one of several administration-approved parents. Background checks would be issued if deemed necessary. The form would dismiss any responsibility of the school district in regards to insurance. Several legally viable miles where this exists in various Iowa school districts. The third, but the least appealing option is to charter a school bus through Durham or other, or any other company. If approved, my next step will begin to begin talks with district personnel to ensure everything in regards to the transportation is legal and clear. If denied, the students may opt to make the trip on their own with no affiliation to Waterloo Schools. I will support the students in this cause and ensure all fees are covered. If you have any questions regarding this competition, please contact James Haley at West High School. Thank you for your consideration. James Haley, 9 through 12 Vocal Music, Waterloo West High School. Because this was an amended letter from the packet, I have a couple of copies that I can present to the board for your files.
That would be great. And I'm sure that we can work with Mr. Haley on working out the transportation details and what works best for the students and what works best, obviously taking care of the district as well. So Dr. McNulty, would you concur that we can take care of that?
We certainly can.
Great.
I can also add that my son is actually now one of the seven students, but I certainly have full support of everything that Mr. Haley has done with the school choir.
Great.
All grades nine through 12. So we certainly want to both thank him for all the work that he's done.
Absolutely. And it sounds like a wonderful trip and a great opportunity for these students to be exposed to really a high caliber and high level. Definitely.
How were the seven students chosen?
I can't answer that question. I do know that from experience with Mr. Haley, he looks at, obviously, the student's abilities, both theatrically and musically, and identifies them and will ask them if they're interested in going to something, competing in something like that. Saturday, we had several students who auditioned for the Allstate Festival that's held in November, and five of the Vocal Music students were selected for that festival.
It's a great honor. Thank you, and thank you for reading the letter. We appreciate it. Any further questions?
I guess I'm concerned, or just curious as to what he's discussing about the van as the policy. Could you expand on that a little bit?
Well, unfortunately, I'll have to look into it and look over the three options and make sure that what we do is both within our policy and guidelines, safety for students and the procedures. But I think we can make it work. We've done it before without a state trips. One situation where we did use Durham to transport students across state lines.
And I would say we could wait until November, but this trip is coming right up. So I think we need to trust that we can get it worked out. But we do, there is a rule on the books because I know some of the smaller sports teams deal with this also, golf and others. So.
Okay. Thank you.
It actually is just that the law is that whatever the van was originally slated for, as far as number of passengers, is the amount. That's the max amount that you can have in a van. So it's not our law. It's a state law and maybe even a national law. I don't know. But it's a law having to do with the capacity, the original capacity by the person who manufactured the car in the first place, the van in the first place.
And it doesn't, you cannot retrofit them? You can't go back and put safety belts in and things after it's been purchased? Because then they deem that it's not. So it's kind of complicated. So.
Quick question. Do you know how many of the students going on the trip plan to be music majors or minors?
I don't know.
And I say that because one of the biggest issues a lot of colleges and universities have is students are very talented, but they struggle with music theory. So I think the musical literacy that they'll be covering is awesome. So if you find out how many students might be interested, we should look into helping them find scholarships and add that to their portfolio that they take in musical literacy.
Okay. Anything further? Great. Then all those in favor of approving the West High School Vocal Music Trip, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign.
We're going to, you know, add an amendment about the transportation?
Well, we can put that in.
Okay, because I would be more comfortable with that.
Okay.
We already voted. That's why.
Well, I didn't vote.
I know. Okay.
And you're actually approving the trip itself.
Right.
And so it certainly would have to meet the guidelines of our rules. So, I mean, every trip is regardless of that.
Absolutely.
So we weren't aware of those, but now that we are, we will absolutely spring into action and take care of that.
Yep. Okay. So with that, now can I get, anybody who didn't respond, Angie, are you there? Because I can't hear you.
I can hear you.
There you go. Okay. Great. Did you say aye?
I did.
Great. Okay. And Sue? We're good?
Aye.
Okay. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you. Tell Mr. Haley we'll be in touch.
I'll go first.
Great. Maybe they can all come sing for us sometime. That'd be wonderful. Great. All right. That brings us then to item H, which is on page 25.
I move the Board of Education approve the submission of the inter-district transportation agreement to AEA 267.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great. And discussion?
Couple of questions. I noticed that reciprocity with most school districts is identical to what we approve. In the case of Cedar Falls, however, it's not. They do not allow entry into their district to eliminate a safety concern related to regular school bus routes or be promoted more efficient or direct route from the school bus. It seems like if there's any district we need to reciprocity with, it would be Cedar Falls. Does anybody know why they don't approve buses for those two reasons?
I can speak to that, too. This form is actually done online. And so each district logs in and says what they would allow for every single district. And so Cedar Falls has only ever allowed option C, which is providing special education transportation services, is the only reason. So, you know, what I don't know, this is a fairly new thing. Last year, it was required but not board-approved. This year, it is required and is required to be approved by the board as well. So it's probably, I believe it's the first time you are seeing a document like this, although we did have to do it last summer for the first time. So each district just makes that decision. And it is really fairly atypical that it would be limited like that because usually the reciprocity is the same. Whatever we would allow, they would allow as well. So, you know, now the question is, if we needed something more than this, could we go to them and ask if they would allow that? That's a possibility. But they make their decisions.
Well, the other issue is on, I don't know, two pages, on the routes traveled, two pages further back, there's a specific case where it says Cedar Falls Yellow Bus to Varela Drive, University Avenue, homeless. And there is no approval for that, as there is not for the one following it. So I think we have several issues here with Cedar Falls.
I was going to ask a question, how you can avoid going into your district unless you, some of the borders, you're right on the line unless you back into the driveway or something.
Well, that's what you have to do. But we're allowing them to come into our district for these specific purposes. And in this case, I think one is to pick up homeless. I think it prob, well, I don't know if it occurs anyway or not, but without that permission, I think we're really not where we need to be from a legal standpoint. So I guess, I think this needs to go back. I would move to postpone this if there's no particular rush on it.
No, there's no rush.
Yeah, to get some clarification on this.
Yeah, particularly the two that we apparently are either executing or want to execute without permission. Yeah, but we don't share a common word or so.
That we just don't.
Okay. Yep, there's absolutely no deadline on this. So I can certainly take it back and see. You know, the ultimate end is, though, that every district makes their decisions based on what they, you know, we only have control over what we do. But I can certainly follow up with that.
But we may or may not, but we would have to reconsider our permission for them to enter.
Our district.
Our district. If, I mean, if they have a valid reason for us not to enter theirs, perhaps that same reason applies to us.
I will check with Marty Metcalf first, and then I will get back with you on that. And you can bring it back before the board. That's fine. Great.
Anything further?
Do you need a second to table?
To table it?
It's postponed. Is it correct?
Postponed. Mike, did you second? Thank you. Yep. I'm going to let you write that down. So we are voting then to postpone the inter-district transportation agreement, which is item H on page 25. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Angie, I didn't hear you. You good with that?
I'm not unmute unless I am saying aye.
Okay. Great. You'll unmute. Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Great. Motion carried then. That takes us then to item J, which is the Irving Elementary Fencing Project on page 36.
I move the Board of Education accept the recommendations from Structure Architecture and approve the quote received from Miller Fence and Flight Company of Waterloo, Iowa for the Irving Fencing Project in the amount of $70,578.81.
Great. And Dan Channer is here this evening. And I know we have some discussion, too. So, Dan, go ahead.
Basically, the question I received was, why did we only get one bid? And we had initially requested from two bidders. And if we had gone beyond that, there was a concern that we were not going to get a responsible bid from anyone else. So the one contractor did not provide us with a quote and did not inform us of that ahead of time. Miller Fencing did provide a quote, and they happen to be the ones that took the fencing at Kingsley apart. And we're reusing about 300 linear feet of that fence and post. So they know how things came apart, how they go back together. And so that's really what happened there.
Okay. We had, I don't know, a year or so ago, a similar incidence in which we only had one envelope to open. And I believe at that time, there was an informal policy created that said, we're not going to do that. Don't open the envelope. Because if you do, you're exposing that bid. If you don't, you don't have a competitive bid. And I wouldn't spend $70,000 of my own money without a competitive bid. So I'm not going to do it for the district, for public money. So I think this is a violation of what we agreed to. That was supposed to occur. You simply have to go back, rebid, cast a broader net, and get a competitive bid. That's the way we agreed to do business, if I remember correctly, the last time this occurred. So I'm really disappointed you opened that envelope because now you're in a pickle because you exposed the low bid, or you exposed the one bid.
Were there two envelopes and there was nothing in the second envelope? I'm just curious.
They were actually quotes.
If you look at the board exhibit by policy 703.4, if it's not over $100,000, it doesn't have to be a closed bid. They did not expect it to be that high. So it was just getting quotes. So it wasn't a violation of what we had set to do before, that we had a closed bid opening. It was just getting, trying to get two quotes.
It wasn't publicized as a, it didn't, we didn't put it out for bid with an RFP.
It was not a normal bid process for a project that was over $100,000. That would need closed bids and so on.
Sure.
Since it was below that expected to be, it could just be getting quotes.
Well, I think it violates the spirit of what we agreed to. So I'm going to vote against this.
Any other discussion?
Well, I did initially, I agree with Lyle in that I would rather have a competitive bid so that I, I mean, I'm not a fence expert by any means. So, I mean, to know if it's even in the ballpark or, you know, I just think that's only fair for the use of our dollars, that we at least have a comparative analysis of it. So I was kind of on the same page as Lyle, thinking that it would be at least respectful of our taxpayer dollars to have two quotes.
Do you have experience? And did you take some time to look at this quote and see if it was reasonable with previous or other types of bids with this?
I believe it is comparable.
Well, and just with you adding, they're using product from Kingsley, you would think that they're trying to be respectful of our dollars. So adding that was a little bit helpful.
So there are no other fence contractors within how far?
There are others, but we're concerned that they may not be able to perform based on some prior experiences.
So you didn't even want to accept quotes from them because you were afraid that they might get it and you didn't trust their work? Is that what you're?
Correct.
We have a facilities meeting on Wednesday in which we could further address this. I'm speaking to the two of you in particular because it's the three of us that are on that committee, maybe flush this policy out a little bit more and also have a little bit more discussion about this with the two of you. How do you feel about that?
I would be in favor of postponing this until further meetings.
Sue, Jesse, take it back to facilities, and then we'll have a discussion. And I do have one question. Dan, are we up against any kind of weather issues with fixing this fence? It does need to be, we do need to do this to the fence. So my concern is, how are we with timing on making that happen before the snow flies? Can it still happen?
It can still happen this year. I talked to Miller Fencing about it. As long as it doesn't get tremendously cold.
Okay.
It can work into January.
Okay. Just checking. So we have to, I need a motion to postpone.
I would move to postpone.
And a second? Sorry, Mike, I didn't mean to step on your line. And a second, Lyle? Or Rhonda?
Rhonda.
Okay. Then all those in favor of moving to postpone the Irving Elementary Fencing Project, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. We'll be seeing that again. Thank you, Dan. The next item on our agenda is the The next item on our agenda is the High School Reform Steering Committee recommendation, which is on item K on page 39. And I'm going to go ahead and get that motion on the table, if I can get to page 39. If I can get to the end here.
I don't see a motion.
There is, I'm trying to find it. There it is. The board, and the recommended motion is the board approve all three recommendations from the High School Reform Steering Committee, and direct the superintendent and administration to work with bond counsel to develop proposed petition language. Can I get that motion on the table?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Great. Now, just as a little background, I am going to turn this over to Dr. Lindeman, but I do want to say that we were very excited to receive the recommendation from this committee a week ago, last evening, a week ago tonight, here in the boardroom. And there are three recommendations that the committee brought to us for all three of those to be accepted. And for those of you who don't have board exhibits, I just want to be clear about what the three are, so I'm going to read them. The Reform Steering Committee makes the following recommendations to the Waterloo Schools Board of Education. The Steering Committee suggests the board approve all three recommendations in their entirety. The first is the implement of, the implementation of 30 career and technical education programs in phases over the next three to four years. The second is to build a standalone facility to house these career and technical education programs on property near Central Middle School. And the third is to initiate needs building improvements at East and West High Schools, and prioritize other funds, SAVE and PEPL, for example, to continue renovations to all three, to all three high schools. So those are the three recommendations. And I will say that all of us have had a week now to read the very lengthy presentation that was given to us and the documentation. And I want to definitely thank the members of that committee, as well as the previous committee. This has been a three-plus-year endeavor on the part of our staff and those members of those committees. And I just want to make sure that everyone realizes that we definitely took all of their recommendations to heart, and it's been a great week of, of getting into that information. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lindeman, and then I know that our board members will have some comments as well. So, thanks.
Absolutely. Well, I, I actually want to start with having the Reform Steering Committee members who are here. Now, remember, this was a 37committee member, committee, I just used that twice. So, but we have, we have maybe a dozen or better here tonight, so I would really like, if you were involved in the reform work, would you please stand up? I know that the cameras will be able to get you for our viewers. So we have quite a few here tonight. There are more, but we thank them very much for their work. This was not an easy task, and you may, you may be seated.
Thank you.
They worked very hard, and we have had a lot of, a lot of meetings. And I think that their work was comprehensive. I think it was intensive, and I think it was thorough. We, I think we left no stones unturned. We, we spent a lot of time on this effort. And this committee was really the second of two. We had a High School Reform Committee that worked on this for probably the, you know, and some people here were actually on that committee as well, I think for the better part of, you know, two and a half plus years. And then this committee took over this spring, and is now bringing the recommendations to you tonight. Now, you read the recommendations, but I would just like to, before we open it up to discussion, last week at the reform, at the workshop, we went through some of the key messages. And so I want to make sure, just for the, the viewers who may be hearing this or seeing this for the first time, if they didn't see some of the information last week, this might be helpful. First of all, career and technical education was not really, we, we didn't know exactly when we started what we were going to be pursuing, but we went out across the nation and looked at a variety of programs, and we, we ended up focusing on career and technical education, because it really was, it appeared right for a district like ours. District that had industry and, and business readily available. And, and some of the districts had faced some of the same challenges that we had, and this seemed to be the answer for them, and it really was proven, and it worked. When, when I say that CTE, or career and technical education, is proven, there were several things that were really amazing about it. First of all, the graduation rate was amazing. 93% is the average of high schools that, that are heavily involved in career and technical education. And we have talked about that in Waterloo, that that is something we absolutely have to improve. Ours right now is hovering around, you know, 75%, give or take a little bit, and that's not enough. We, we need all of our kids to graduate. Anything less than that is, is really unacceptable, and our students are fully capable of graduating, and we want them to be engaged at a high level. So that's, that's another thing. Another key point that we brought out last week was really that this is an expansion of what we are currently doing. We have some, and, and you might say limited, but we have CTE in our district. We have career and technical education in our district right now. I believe of the 30 recommendations that we are bringing, I, I believe we have portions of 11 of them. And so this would, would greatly expand on the opportunities and the, the different areas that kids could pursue while they were, were here. So that's another great selling point. Again, we are increasing student engagement for all. When students are, are really digging into authentic learning experiences that kind of simulate what it's like in the, in the real world, they're naturally engaged. And so we know by having kids move beyond, you know, reading about careers, or, or maybe going on a, a field trip, actually doing the projects that people really do in their, in their work. They're just engaged, engaged at high levels. And those of us who went to a variety of places across the United States, I think that was probably the number-one selling point for us, was the passion from the students and the passion from the, the staff. The students, I, I've told this story so many times, people are tired of hearing it, but one of the places we went was, was Delaware, Wilmington, Delaware. And it was shortly after Hurricane Sandy had happened, and the students said, "I think the state overreacted. We could have come to school. There was really no reason that we didn't come to school. We, we just could have been here." And I just couldn't help but think of every snowstorm in Iowa, and how our kids may or may not say that. I think many of them say, "Ooh, you know, a snow day." I know my own children say that too. And to have kids be so passionate about the learning in front of them, to say, "We, we could have come to school. There's no reason that we, we had to miss school," was just a testimony in itself. We know that the, this is, this is for all students. This is not for one particular group of students. This is for all students. But one, one group that we really do want to target through this, and it's not the only group, this is for everyone. But we do have students who drop out, and the cost of doing nothing for us is great. We know that we have to engage all kids, and we can't, we can't have any students leaving us without a preparation for life after high school. So we, we just know that, you know, some students disengage to the point of, of dropping out, and, and it's just, this is something that we know works. One other thing I would point out, I know that through the process, we have really tried to be diligent in putting information out there for our public. And, and in that process, one of the things we did is we put out our three recommendations that this committee started with. And one of those recommendations was to look at perhaps combining East and West, and, or restructuring in some way that would allow sharing between those, and possibly under one roof. And that really is not a recommendation with this, with this proposal coming before you. We did explore it, but it really was not the recommendation that we are bringing before you. So just for any public, I still occasionally will get asked, now, are we, are we doing something with East and West? Are we closing one of those buildings? And, and this recommendation does not include that option. It was explored, but it was determined that it was not right for us at, at this point. So finally, I think one of the other things that came up last week was that the committee is really recommending a unique funding structure. So we believe that we can fund this project through existing property tax dollars if we shift or offset one of the things that's currently being generated, or one of the funds that's being generated through property tax, over to a different option, which is income surtax. And so if we shift, even though we can't pay for this out of property, we can't pay for this out of income, income surtax, we certainly can pay for something else out of income surtax. And that freed up, those freed-up dollars would really be able to fund this project. So we really are committed, we're asking you to consider the, the recommendation of using a, a unique funding structure, which makes this different. It makes it different. And I loved, Andrew, this is a shout-out to the Courier, but I loved that this week the quote was actually, it was a quote for me, but it's been said many times. I happen to get credit for saying it, but we've said that this, this proposal is really less about facilities than it is about the way that we educate our children. It's really about giving a unique opportunity for our students. And so I, I thank the Courier for, for, you know, giving me credit for that, but quite honestly, I think many of us had said that very same statement. This is less about facilities than it is about what we, what we offer to our kids. And so, and, and my final comment, I think that, that the committee should be applauded for doing their due diligence in finding what was right for our kids, but also really engaging the community all along the way. We have lovingly joked that this has been a three-and-a-half-year project, and, you know, we say it three-and-a-half years with, with emphasis, because it really has been a long time. But I think every committee member could give many examples of how we tried to engage the public all along the way. And so whether that was town hall meetings, or whether it was every committee member going out and surveying three or five, or, you know, people, bringing that data back. Most recently, we did a, a survey, we did a, we hired a company to do some surveying for us, and once again, as we suspected, it was greatly supported. Many things were supported. They lo, you know, people in this random survey loved the concept of partnering with, with Hawkeye Community College and University of Northern Iowa and other post-secondary institutions. They loved the concept of engaging kids at high levels. They loved the concept of doing something different and adding, you know, more to personalized instruction instead of a one-size-fits-all. So I, I thank the committee for their work. It was really a pleasure, a privilege to lead the committee and to work through the process, which was not easy. But I think we are very satisfied with the, the recommendations that come before you. We believe without doubt that it is the best recommendation. And we would entertain any questions, and, and the committee is here too.
Right. Well, thanks again, and for all of you who already stood, I'm not going to make you stand again, but I am, I am going to clap, because I really appreciate it, and I just want you to know that. So, my colleagues can join me. So with that, I will open it up, and board members, do you have comments? Anything that you'd like to add this evening? I know we did do some question and answer.
You want to start?
Go ahead. I shouldn't.
Thank you.
I'll start on this side, and then when comments come up.
Well, first of all, I think this is probably the most significant long-range plan proposal to come before this board in, in quite a number of years. And I'm always one to be concerned about the weak link and the chain, so I've looked at this in some detail, and I'm pretty pleased, and I thank the, the committee in particular for going through every detail, because at this point at least, I can't, I can't find, it seems every aspect is, is pretty solid, so, so there's no obvious link after looking at it. Just an aside here, I know that a first-grade class not too far from here, not too long ago, was exploring the engineering solving problem process. So in, in partial answer to Sam's concern, I'm hoping that this whole philosophy backs itself down into the lower grades, so we can identify at least those that, that aren't getting it in the manner that they are today, and maybe even include some, some, a little project-based learning, because this is, this is first cousin of that, at least down into the lower grades. So I don't know if that, I'm sure that doesn't totally answer your concern, but I think there's a positive aspect of this that goes down into the lower grades. The concept of career-oriented education, of course, is not new. It's, it's the historical standard, as a matter of fact, but it's, it's fallen out of favor the last generation or two. But now, I think, from a philosophical standpoint, our society is observing, hey, wait a minute, we're, we're being restricted from the shortage of skills as needed to generate growth and prosperity and, and service, especially in, in the area of healthcare, old-age healthcare, Sue. So this, this proposal, I think, is, is good in a variety of ways. I think it's good for students, because not all students have the same interest and aptitude, thank goodness. So the more career choices we can offer, the more students that are going to connect with one of them, and end up meeting our mission statement up here, is continuing education, pursue a career path, and contributing to the community. I think the more choices, the better, and I think these 30 is, is a great start. I think it's good for the community, because, at least from the community members, it was, it was fairly clear that, again, growth and prosperity of our community is restricted by lack of skills in, in a number of these areas. And then it's also good for taxpayers, I think, even though there's some upfront, and I really appreciate the, the property tax neutral aspect, because I think this whole board for some time has been very cognizant of the negative aspects of increasing property tax. So this is one, one approach to funding it. But to me, it's also an efficiency play. If you look at the 1,000 hours a year through eighth through 12th grade, say, for example, that's 5,000 hours. If you can just improve learning efficiency 20%, that adds basically a year of learning. And, and that helps everybody, including the, especially the taxpayers, because the students end up, if they don't fully apply themselves their senior year, and many of them don't, they have extra time, so they could, any student can effectively double-major in, in some sort of career and college prep at the same time, if they choose to do so. And if they do so, they end up with a year's credit for college. So not only does the student not need to pay the $8,000, whatever it is, tuition, but for every student, if, if my understanding is correct, for every student in college, the taxpayers subsidize that student by about another $8,000. So they're only paying about half what it really costs. The state's paying the other half. So when you compare the $6,500, or whatever our per-student pupil rate is right now, that we get from the state, if for that same money, you can gain a year, it not only saves the student the $8,000 of the year, but saves the taxpayers another $8,000. So, you know, that might be, I don't think it's really aggressive. So there's an efficiency play there. And then in terms of the facility, it's a, it's what many would call, I think, a, a single-purpose facility. It's for this career center. If you look at the careers, just pick a couple of them. Animal science. Today, we really don't have a current facility to fully develop an animal science program. Desapart technology. We don't have a facility for, to drive in a Mack truck, or a combine, or a light tractor, or a school bus, to have students not only diagnose and repair, but plan for it, order bill of materials, communicate with the real customer. All these business skills that they should, if we, if we planned the program right, that they'll have. And then the last one I mentioned is construction technology. You know, we don't have a place to build a fully, a complete house that, you know, my vision is that you would open the airplane hangar doors and move it out and put it on a habitat for humanity site, or some other place. But, but you have all of the things going on to build that house at one time, so you've got a real-world situation where, where you've got all these construction trades, and they're learning them all, at the same time, they're stumbling over another, so they learn the interference that happens in the real world, and then the other problem of waiting for another trade. So I think, and again, I envision a student general contractor, a student person that's ordering, or outlining the bill of materials, a student purchasing person, they go through the, the whole program. So from a facility standpoint, I visualize this as a, as not a typical school building, but a, a high bay, clear-span building that's very flexible, because even though we have these 30 careers, we don't know which ones, there may be some drop out, there may be some replaced, there may be new ones that, undoubtedly, there'll be new ones coming into play. So it's that kind of structure. So the structure is, again, a single-purpose structure, I believe, that's going to simply support these careers, which, and we don't have any structure like that today. So it's, it's really a requirement. So that's, as I see it, I think it's just a wonderful proposal, and, and the other thing as far as the site of the, the site of the, the location that's picked out, it's equitable. We can't afford competition, so every student, whether you're East, West, or Expo, have equal access to the same programs, the same quality of instruction. It's about equal distance from both, so, so it seems to me a very good plan overall. I think the committee's just done a outstanding job.
Thanks, Lyle. And I would add, we also own that land, so makes it a, makes it.
Well, that's true.
Right. Makes it even more attractive.
The road structures there, the, the lawn mowing, the snow removal, all that stuff helps to.
Absolutely. So, you want to go down the line? You want to flip for it? Sue?
Well, first of all, I served on the committee also, so had a little more of the insight. I was gone at the meeting last week. I was out of town. But I guess, just in reflecting of growing up in this community. of growing up in this community and being in the buildings, I, first of all, want to thank the community for the support of the PEPAL. And I think that is the first collaborative effort that we had with the community, and just in going over, I was going over everything as I did this, and we have completed nine brand-new elementaries with the PEPAL dollars, and a new middle school, and the two other, Bunker and Hoover, were remodeled in lots of phases, and then even the high school, and we've used the dollars for the asbestos removal, demolition. So, I think we have been very diligent and respectful of those dollars, and I think it's time now that we put our energies into the high schools. East High was built in 1918, and West High was built in 1955. So, Hoover is next on the list at 1967. So, I think that our high schools are now, this is a really appropriate time to start this effort, and at Central, we have the land there. But also, I was going through the CTE also, and I found some interesting statistics with this, that, this was from the College and Career Readiness and Success Center, and it said, "The evolution of CTE is making it a more popular and viable option for students of all abilities. According to the National Center for Education Statistics, 90% of all high school graduates in the U.S. have earned some CTE credit. Furthermore, research on high-quality CTE programs and pathways shows that these programs reduce dropout rates, encourage participation in post-secondary education, and enable students to earn dual enrollment credits, industry-endorsed certificates, and technical endorsements added on to their high school diploma." So, I just think that it is an awesome time and opportunity to implement these programs, and with the new building, like Lyle said, it will bring both East and West students to one neutral site. We won't have to have the duplication of the programs, and I think that it is just going to increase our dropout rate, which I have looked at Indiana and Tennessee, who have very strong CTE programs. And in Indiana, just this summer, they are now at 95% of their CTE students graduate, compared with 89.8 for all other graduates in general. So, and they said, "Of the difference of that, 14% will go directly to work, and 1% will enter military, and the rest will go on to a two-year or a four-year college." So, I think this is fitting right in with our mission statement of preparing for career and college, and I just think it is a wonderful opportunity for our students, and the programs, obviously, we'll see what, excuse me, works, and what works with the industry that we have here in Waterloo, but I just think that this is just the best opportunity for our students, and I'm in full support of it.
Sue, and I'm going to add to your PEPAL talk, that when we look at creative financing and what we've done to, in this proposal, 15 to 20% of what's being proposed here this evening is coming out of that PEPAL and save money. So, one set money. So, that's really, I think, important to note as well, that we're good stewards of that, those dollars, so.
Can I add on to that, too?
You sure may.
I don't know if I remember anything clearly, but I'm actually at a SHRM conference, which is an HR conference, and what I've been hearing all day just is right in line with us moving to CTE and making it available to our kids. Employers are looking for people who are well-rounded, who have experience, who, and that's what they're telling HR professionals, that they need to be changing their job descriptions to fit those different things. And we, by moving in this direction, we are preparing our kids for what is in the future, what the future is going to be. So, I think that being proactive rather than reactive to the needs of our change in demographics is going to be amazing, and, again, I think the people who spent three and a half years working on such a project to make sure that it's right, and not just rushing for something, and putting something on the table to, just to get it going, but to take the time to make sure that it is exactly the right thing that is for all of our, all of our students, whether that be people who are ELL, or who might have a disability. I mean, I think everything was taken into consideration. It's very equitable as far as the opportunities that will be available to all of our students, is what I read in the plan. And so, I'm real excited being at this conference, having just read that information, and to be able to be on the call is exciting for me, so I just wanted to add that.
Thanks, Angie. I had your mic, so you're all good.
I believe implementation of the CTE, to echo a little bit of what Lyle had said, is going to backfill into the middle schools. That is already in the plan, to speak with middle school children and get some ideas on what they're thinking about for careers, and let them see what those careers look like at an earlier age, so that they're not entering college, or even high school, not understanding or knowing really what a lot of careers entail. So, I think that's, that will also back down into the elementaries, getting some students, some good guidance for their future. My experiences in traveling around the country to the different CTE programs was very enlightening and very exciting, because you walk into a classroom, and you don't see students not participating. They're all very engaged. I think many who traveled with us to those schools, both other staff members, other board members, and other community members, all saw the same thing, and that's really what got us excited about moving forward with this, is to see that engagement of those students, because a student who's engaged is a student who's learning, and actively participating in a class is really a big movement forward. Talking about dual high school, college credit, I think is a big plus. Not only is it saving the student potential dollars for college, it also gives them an opportunity to go to work in a, maybe a different career that they learned in high school, to help supplement the payment for maybe a future career that they're going to go to college for. So, it's not only a direct career, but maybe it's a stair-step endeavor as well. Participation of local industry, I think, is another key that we need to push forward. Hasn't really been discussed or announced too much, but I know that there are very several industries in the Waterloo, Cedar Falls area that are very excited with this program, and looking forward to getting students into their industry, literally, in a site visit, or maybe even a few weeks on the job, training-type work, to give them a direct idea of what that career entails. And again, it's saving that student possibly, potentially, time and money in going to college for a career, and then deciding that's not what they want. So, I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks.
I just want to, just to add, you know, this is a multi-layered approach to education. You know, this is just contextual learning. And, you know, being career-ready can also lead to being college-ready. And so, I'm not going to get into the rates, and the quotes, and the bonds, and all of that, but that's just, I want the community to sort of see this just as a multi-layered approach, contextual learning, and that being career-ready can also lead to being college-ready.
Absolutely. Jessie, I haven't forgotten about you.
That's okay. Well, I've covered a list of classes offered here, and I guess I think about what we can offer kids here, and I kind of, it's funny, but Mike said, I go back on some of my own experiences, and some of my, a former classmate, well, he started in automotive technology. He went to trade schools in high school, worked in automotive for about five years doing mechanic work, decided to go back to get an engineering degree. That early experience really helped him when he went to engineering, because he had a lot more practical experience than many of his classmates or peers. I would say, I was just opposite there, where I went straight to college for engineering, and the first time I walked down on Factory 4, I just, you know, I struggled communicating with the workers there a little bit, you know, because I was talking in a different language they were. And so, I see a lot of good things where you can, when you look at how they can cross programs here. And then, the other one was, you know, in the last week, so we're talking about technology and STEM and different things, I would say I have four very diverse children, and they're levels of things, and it's been, I had my second grader come up and tell me what STEM was this week. Pretty amazing, you know, and he's definitely, you know, is the next engineer probably in my family, I do believe. I had the pleasure of watching the videos of Waterloo Schools that on from the women in engineering. My daughter's been fortunate enough, been in that group, and seeing her, you know, active summer friends and some of these activities is just great, you know, and her mindset, where she's going, would definitely fit in some of these categories. And then, last night, I sat down with my eighth-grade son, who, you know, was probably going to have opportunity here if he still through, and said, you know, "What do you think of these?" And he says, "Wow, construction technology and culinary arts." I don't know, maybe he'll build his own restaurant. But, you know, I look at that, and I think, you know, I would say, you know, that would be a cross-section, a lot of kids out there, when I talk in the community, you know, there's a lot of people that, when they hear what it really is, are on board with it, you know, and think, you know, "That's a good idea." And, and yes, I think the biggest challenge is, you know, is explaining to everybody in the community what we're trying to accomplish, and what's out there. And I think the board's done a good job putting these together, and the business has been very helpful, you've researched in different areas. My hats off to the committee and their work in the proposal being brought up.
I think that underscores, I think, Rhonda, a comment that you made after coming back from Des Moines, saying, you know, "This is a gateway to all careers." And I think that is the theme, you know, that, as you described, in your own experience, you really don't know, but this opens this door, and this opens this door, and pretty soon, it leads to a career that might not have otherwise, so.
Well, yeah, and I think we have to get over the mentality, because CTE is no longer, I just thought of this, but it's no longer teaching students a narrow skill set for just an entry-level job, but it's teaching them about an entire career.
Right.
And we have to change that mindset.
And that's one of the things that speaks to me about this, is that it does really fit all of our kids. It gives a lot of options. I know, I'm not going to repeat it all again, but we do have people who are going to go straight to careers. We have people who may go into two-year, we have people that may go four-year, we have people that may want to do internships, and I just think any way that we can engage all of our kids in instruction that is relevant to them is super important. And so, likewise, I am wholeheartedly excited about this, and I have to say that I am really ready, and our kids deserve this, and our kids shouldn't have to wait another minute to get this stuff going. So, I'm pretty excited, and I don't want to cut off the conversation, so are there any other comments? Angie, do you have anything further?
I do not.
Okay, not to put you on the spot, but, great.
And just one other thing that Crystal had given me today that I thought was really interesting, is Des Moines really started to go more full-force into their CTE, and she sent me the graduation rates in Des Moines, and they have gone up every year with their CTE programming, and substantially, and it's just impressive. So, that's a huge driver for me, is to get that graduation rate up.
And that's Des Moines Public?
Yep.
Yeah.
Their career tech center that's downtown.
So, if it does, the rates are for Des Moines Public schools, right?
Yep. Great, thanks, Sue. All right, anything further? Well, then, all those in favor of approving the High School Reform Steering Committee Recommendations, all three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thanks again for all your work, those of you here tonight. That takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is Item L on page 47, and the recommended motion is, "The Board Approved the Agreement to Establish a Consortium to Jointly Administer an Instructional Program at Brenwood School Located Within the Boundaries of the Waverly-Shelrock Community School District for the 2015-16 as Presented." Can I get that on the table?
Sure.
And a second?
Second.
Thanks. And I believe that Larry Martin is here this evening. If anybody has any questions, Larry, you want to come up and just give us a little info on this? Thanks.
I thought everybody was here to, you know, kind of support me and...
I know. I feel bad.
Appreciate that view.
You lost your cheering section.
Rhonda, Jessie, welcome. Brenwood is a organization that's been run by the AA for many years. It's a facility that works with students with some more significant behavior needs. It grew a little bit. It used to be more of a high school setting, but when we closed Castle Hill, they made it more into a K-12 setting. We only use it at the middle school and high school level, and probably throughout a year, we may have one to two students that the IAB team may determine they need that level of service. They also have a, also, also, that's a nice word, they have a, kind of a small residential setting that Lutheran Services coordinates, where there may be some students that are placed by DHS in that setting, and then they provide the schooling while they're there.
Will you say again how many students you said?
For us, we, we probably one to two students.
I thought you said one to two, okay.
How were these students referred to you, again?
There's a couple of different ones. If there are some students that, if they've done something in the school with weapons, drugs, or a seriously bodily injury, it's an interim setting that we can place them in for 45 days. Typically, those students are already at Expo, which has our most support, so that's a site that we can utilize to get them to another setting and continue their education for a period of time. And then we do have a few individuals that their individual needs are significant enough that our building structure, I mean, part of Expo has lots of pipes and those types of things. One student that we had go there last year, just kept climbing up and, you know, crawling through the pipes. Well, that's not a safe place to be educated, so we did utilize Brenwood.
And the ages?
Pardon?
Ages and grades that you assist?
Middle school and high school.
Yeah. And your collaboration with the Waterloo Police Department?
That, I mean, they're, it's separate.
Right. My reason for asking is, I think this would be a great opportunity to further what you all are doing at Brenwood, and look at alternatives to incarcerating our young people and educating them, as opposed to incarcerating them. So, I hope that in the future, we can work with Brenwood to look at some options for out-of-school suspensions and things of that nature, and look at, because I know there's a lot of parents that are looking for opportunities to help their kids who are struggling with some sociocultural issues, and I think Brenwood does some really good stuff. I think more people should, you know, probably look into what they're doing, and I would like to ask that maybe Chief Chelka consider meeting with you to see how we could reduce the incarceration rates of some of our young people.
Particularly in school.
Particularly in school, and use your resources. That's all I have.
This is a rather lengthy agreement document?
Yes, it is.
And some of it is a little difficult to understand when you're not dealing with this at a daily basis. I assume that you have looked through this, and you are very comfortable with the proposal?
Yes, it's very similar to the one we, the consortium that we have with...
River Hills.
Okay, that's what I wanted, thank you.
And this area really needs, you know, it's, because we have to source out to other counties, so it'd be really good for us to continue doing...
The good work that you do.
So, we transfer these students in a van?
Yes.
I see Waverly-Shelrock has not filled out their agreement yet, allowing our van to...
Cross the, into, cross into their district?
So, that's another item for the postponed motion.
Table. Anything further for Mr. Martin? Thanks for staying with us, Larry, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Great. Then, all those in favor of approving the Brenwood Consortium Agreement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to the next item on our agenda, which is Board Policy Changes. This is the second reading for this wellness... reading for this wellness policy. It is on page 62 of our board exhibit. And the recommended motion is that the board approve the following policy, wellness. Can I get that on the table, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. And Tara Thomas is here this evening to give us a little more background on this.
As we indicated in the first reading, there are no significant changes to the intent of the policy. Just simply some minor language tweaks to update the current language to reflect how we execute this policy.
Seems pretty straightforward, so.
I have one comment.
Yeah.
Is there a regulation that is attached to this, this policy?
I don't know. Good question.
Well, the reason I ask is, I guess I would have a request to maybe meet with the, someone in the administration on how the board, or bring to the board what is currently implemented to fulfill the policy specifically with regards to physical activity and the wellness policy as it's stated. There are some curriculum with, within the elementary school, middle school and high school with how the, the physical activity is, is taken care of within this. And I guess I would just request to maybe have a small committee look this regulation over if there is one.
And it does say that this is reviewed every three years?
Every three years, yep.
As required by the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act.
Were you talking, Mike, about meeting the PE requirements with the Sportsplex and those sorts of programs?
Yeah, specifically what the, what curriculum is implemented in elementary school to allow the children to get adequate physical activity during the school day, and then also moving up into middle school and high school as well. Specifically with high school, with our regulation is a little more stringent, or maybe lax in some areas, depending on how you, how you look at it, as to how we either allow or disallow physical activity and get credit for PE.
Or waive, or waive the requirement.
Or waive it, right. And it, and this policy does now state not, in not just the classroom, but the entire school environment, which I think is important to note as well.
So there is a regulation that goes along with this. We made some minor changes, but most of that regulation stayed intact. We looked at what is our practice, what does the law say, what do we need to do to ensure the health of our children, and felt it was pretty tight. But I would be more than happy to, we can set up a meeting, look at that. I know you requested data, and we've been working on that as well, and we could have that ready. There are certain, I know that there is concern around the exemptions at the high school level. Those are Iowa code. We really don't have control over that. So we can explain those and make sure that everybody has full understanding of that.
Well, it's how you interpret that code and how the, how our district interprets that code and implements it.
And we certainly can have a discussion on that and find out what we're doing. We also can look at the time at each one of the levels and see where those programs are working and where we might be able to shore those up and strengthen our PE overall.
And maybe we could put a couple of board members on, you know, kind of create a little small task force or, you know, just to...
Well, we have a wellness committee, and we have not met, and I...
That'd be great.
Probably have to own that responsibility for that. But we have not met, but let me see what I can do after the first of the year.
You got an ad hoc member right over here.
Yes, yeah. Mike and I have worked before on this, so.
Yeah.
Let us see what we can put together and address that. I can't, I cannot do it before the beginning of the year, unless we find somebody else who can run that. But I think after that point, we can get something built in for, for the wellness committee at a meeting. And I think we have some responsibility there to make sure we get that done.
Well, I think a few meetings ago, we approved the Sportsplex option. Is there a definition of that program? In other words, is there, like, you have to spend so many hours doing this and so many hours doing that and whatever to get credit?
Credit.
Yes, there was. But we don't have that program running. We did not, we were not able to get the grants to support that. And there's a funding issue around that.
Yeah, that was based on receiving.
That was based on that money that we didn't get.
All right.
Thank you.
But Debbie, I appreciate the commitment to that and to getting that committee going. And like I said, I think Mike will be your first one to set a date.
I can't even imagine having that committee meeting without Mike being there.
Perfect, perfect. Great. Then, anything else with this policy? Anybody else have questions? Great. Seeing none, all those in favor then of approving board policy changes to policy number 507.6 Wellness, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us to the last few items on our agenda, just our reporting. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lindeman for her report.
Yeah, the, by far, the highlight for me of superintendent report tonight is, is what just happened a few minutes ago with the approval of the, the high school reform. What, what a monumental statement to be at this point and to be looking at that. I mean, everybody would just take a big sigh of relief because it has been a long time coming, so that is exciting. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention, in that same vein, that today, at the state level, the report came out from the Career and Technical Education Task Force, and how timely that that was released today. They have had a group of people working on what Iowa should be doing to enhance career and technical education. We are, Iowa is, is truly behind other states. And at, even at the state level, from their vantage point, they're saying, we need to do some things differently. And so this report, and I'm sure the public can't see it, but we will, you know, Tara, maybe we can post that online or provide a link for this document. It's just entitled Final Report of the Secondary Career and Technical Education Task Force. And if you'll just, you know, bear with me a minute, I would just summarize the five findings of this, and I want you to listen, listen for the connection to what, what just happened, you know, at seven o'clock tonight. First of all, recommendation number one from this task force, which I believe, Crystal, correct me, it was 27, 30, 27 to 30 people, something like that, was it around 30 people? Okay. So number one, to offer guidance counseling in the area of careers. That was something that we had talked about. Number two, to allow students to explore or specialize in areas of career interests. So not just that kids could take a surface level and not forcing them through a march, allowing either one, was their second recommendation. Number three, increase access for opportunities for work-based experiences. That's what we just did tonight. Number four, address the shortage of, of career and technical education teachers and look at how we use staff and be creative about that. Number four. And the last one is really to explore partnerships. I think the words were, explore a statewide system of regional centers. And, and I was talking with several people, and really what they're doing is they're looking at established programs and seeing if they can connect regional partnerships. And what better opportunity for Waterloo than to get in on this right now versus, you know, waiting for, for something else. And we've, we've talked about that. That certainly was not the primary consideration as we moved toward these recommendations. But it really was something that we said, you know, this is, does have the opportunity to be a regional center, and that was something. So again, I would highly encourage everybody, we'll send it out to the board in the, in the Thursday update, but I think that's something excellent to look at. And quite ironic that it was released today. And this is something too for, I would just mention this probably more for the public versus the, the school board, although some of you have, have children in, in the school still. And so we did prepare flyers in anticipation of, of tonight. We wanted to make sure that we took the opportunity at conferences this week, which are on Tuesday and Thursday, to help parents know what is happening. So we've kind of held up on the printing to make sure that it was approved tonight, but, you know, making sure that that was the case. And we have, actually, there's two versions. One is for elementary and middle school, and one is for the high school. But it really talks about, you know, what do you want your child to be when they grow up? What do you want your children to do after high school? And it just kind of talks a little bit about our initiatives and what we're pursuing. And so parents will have the first opportunity, actually, not the first, but another opportunity to take a peek at that.
And I bet those are in other languages.
They probably are. I'm not sure. So I, I only have English versions right here.
We'll get them.
And this, another thing is, I clipped out this, this, I don't know if it was an editorial. Yeah, it is an editorial that was in the Des Moines Register yesterday, but it talked about something that Storm Lake is doing creative to help students graduate and having stu, have, to increase their graduation rate. And remarkably, guess what they are looking at? Career and technical education. And it's in the, it was in the editorial section of the, of the Des Moines Register yesterday. And I actually also appreciated the editorial in the Waterloo Courier yesterday as well, talking about the very same thing with career and technical education. I think they've been great supporters of, of this work. So let me see if there's anything else. Just one date, I guess. We, parents and, and community, please, please mark your calendar for November 12th for the STEM Festival coming up. It is an amazing experience. And I know, I think we have a board meeting between now and then. But if I wait till next time, you may already have your calendar filled, so, filled. So I believe, yeah, four, four o'clock till 7:30. And I know that I take my own children and I, we are, you know, usually the first ones there, and I drag them kicking and screaming out of the event, out of the Five Sullivan Brothers, because they absolutely love it. It is truly hands-on opportunities for, for families. And believe me, the adults enjoy it just as much. I already mentioned that conferences are tomorrow, and it is Red Ribbon Week this week, which is drug prevention, and there's a lot of activities going on. And I know that, I think we all know that just wearing a red ribbon is, is not enough to make a difference for, for kids. But it, it really is helping parents understand what's going on and trying to encourage parents to have conversations with their children, teachers having conversations. And, and so that is another event this week. And that's it. That's a lot.
Thank you, Dr. Lindeman. Appreciate that. Okay, so since Lyle started comments on that side, I'm going to go over here. I'm going to go rogue. I'm going to start with Jesse tonight for board comments.
So just a word to thank to Waterloo School Foundation, everybody's supported the trick-or-trot. That was my first time attending, and it was out my back door almost. But a very good event. I used to see a lot of kids. Some of my kids I've worked with before too. So good job to all the community helping with that. And then my continued support as well for the Cedar Valley STEM Festival. And just a comment that we should have a, the Dear Booth will have somebody named Baxter for kids to interact with, so.
All right.
So I think it's going to be exciting for them.
Great. Keep eyes out for Baxter. So Angie, are you still with us? Did I lose you?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Do you have any report tonight?
I have nothing other than just that grateful to be able to be a part of the conversation while I'm in Boston. And just that, you know, I think we're really moving in the right direction and serving all of our kids. That's it.
Awesome. Thank you. And I really appreciate you joining us by conference call. Thanks again. So, Sue?
Well, I wanted to reiterate what Jane said, the importance of conferences. I know at our elementary, we have great turnout, middle school, a little less in high school. So if you have a high school student, go to the conference. It's very interesting. You can speak with all the teachers in one area. And just encourage you to do that, because if the kid, your child sees that you are supporting their efforts, then that maybe will increase your test results in turn, which helps everybody. But, and I do also, I'm just excited about what we approved tonight. And I just hope the community gets behind it. If the community has questions, there'll probably be website accessibility for that. Call Dr. Lindeman, call Crystal, call Tara, anyone in the district would be willing to answer the question, Dr. McNulty, Michael, once we get into the financing of everything. But just ask the, the community to continue to support us. And, and we're as transparent as we can be with our dollars. And I just, I applaud the administration and board for that. And then also, I just wanted to give a shout out to the Lowell second graders and the Pointer first graders who are both participating in the Socktober event, which is to help bring in socks and clothing for the whole month of October for the homeless. And I just think it's really cool that we're starting that at such young ages. And applause to those teachers too, because you're instilling in a student to help others and to keep the focus away from self and onto others. So if you need to give, if you have some socks or clothing, I'm sure they'll still accept it. It's till this Friday. So that's the second graders at Lowell and the first graders at Pointer. So, great job.
Socktober, that's pretty cute. I like that. Socktober, all right. Rhonda?
I just, I wanted to thank the gentleman, Mr. Neal, was it, for your comments earlier tonight. And I agree that Job Corps is, is a really valuable resource to a lot of our young people. And I, and I hope, and I truly believe that this new CTE project initiative that we're doing will offer young men the same option that the young man you spoke of will have. And giving students who may otherwise consider stopping out of school or dropping out of school because they don't see their education as relevant. But I agree with you, sir. And, and I believe that this contextual learning initiative that we're doing with the CTE program will offer young men, like the one you spoke of, to be engaged in. And, and also it adds rigor as well. So I think that we will, we are addressing the issue of our students stopping out, dropping out, not being engaged, not being interested, and not being able to relate to some of the, the core curriculum that we may have. So I think this is, is an answer to that. So thank you very much for your comments.
Mike?
Just congratulations to the East High Choir. I attended a concert for them last Monday night. Very good program. Congratulations to Mr. Barry. He's a first-time teacher, and he did a very good job. He's actually recruiting quite a few more students into the program this year. So I was very excited to hear the program and, and see the program grow. And just congratulate the board and the committees that were involved with the CTE and, and high school reform. I think it's not just for CTE program specifically, it's for students. We have the IB program for, for the highly intellectual students. We have, and now we have programs for all students on the table. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Lyle?
Just that it's a milestone meeting, significant step forward and beginning of the next step. But I would like to invite anybody to comment or criticize. I mean, it's still in the formation stage, and we want to make it the best possible. So all ideas are, are welcome, even though we've, we've taken a significant step. And then just lastly, again, back to Sam's comments. We talked about in the past, the third grade competency, going ahead with that even though the state hasn't mandated it. The state, I think, has talked about it. But we've kind of been involved in this other, other project. But it might, we might want to relook at where, where we're at on that. And Waterloo can do, can do that, implement that on their own. We don't need a state law to tell us to do it. So, so that might be something we might want to put on the agenda. Other than that, thanks, yeah. Many thanks to all the committee members that spent so many hours.
Here, here. I just have two quick things. I worked the concession stand on Friday night at the final home football game for West High versus Kennedy. As many of you may know, the Kennedy is nine and oh. Very good team. They brought a lot of people with them. And I have to say, I was so proud that night. The swim team, the men's swim team was, was what had me there. And it was really neat to see both East and West sophomores, juniors, seniors working together in the concession stand, but also to hear the great comments from the Kennedy families on that, on that side about, this is a beautiful facility up here. We've really been welcomed. And I was just really proud to be a Waterloo parent that night. So I wanted to say that. And then I also wanted to echo what Dr. Lindeman said about the Courier. I wanted to thank the editorial from yesterday. The two words that were the most, that really jumped out at me were proud and amazed. And those two words are what I want to leave you with tonight, because I'm really proud of this board. I'm really proud of the work that went into this report. And I'm amazed that we are, we're on the cusp of something really, I think, quite incredible here in this community. So with that, there being no further business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second? Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. We are adjourned. Have a great night. Thanks. [applause]